Mary Judge.
Yes ma'am. Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen. It's one thirty P M. We're here today on a special meeting, a budget workshop session, and the meeting will come to order. Have everyone present, and Commissioner Cooper, will you please lead us in the invocation?
Your Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county, help us to make the right decision concerning our employees and citizens, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, budget workshop to review and discuss the past, present, and future budget needs and concerns for the following departments. Before we begin, Angela, do you have that worksheet available that you've sent to us last week?
Yes sir.
There might be some people here that were not here for the first budget workshop. I know there's one person here that wasn't here for the first one. So would you mind just going over that again, please, with the appraised values and where we stand with the contingency fund?
Yes sir. At our last budget workshop, Alex Stevens with appraisal districts stopped by and he gave us the new appraised values, the estimated at this point. And to put that into perspective for our tax revenue, the estimated net taxable value, which includes minerals, is two billion, seven hundred and forty-three million, six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. The rolling stock value, we do not have it at this time, so we just used last year's amount, and it was ten B- ten million, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty. For a total of two billion, seven hundred and fifty-three million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Our tax rate currently is fifty-six cents. Our estimated, well, and then multiply that by your tax rate, it gives you fifteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Your estimated frozen tax loss is three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, which gives you an estimated tax revenue of fifteen billion, one hundred and eighteen, fifteen million, one hundred and eighteen me- thousand. Fifteen million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-two cents. The estimated budget tax revenue last year is fifteen million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that's an estimated decrease in our tax revenue by six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you ma'am. You did a good job on that. Appreciate it.
Good millions of billions. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions regarding that, or, and then you see below where we are with the contingency fund as of today. So we'll start with the first department is the county clerk's office. I understand that Glenda is out today and you're gonna, you're gonna present everything for her, or at least ask any, answer any questions that we might have. And if you don't have the answer, then we'll wait and talk to Glenda about it later. Is that okay with everyone? Glenda asked if we'd go ahead and proceed without her.
Correct.
Okay. You have a letter here that Glenda submitted on March twenty-first. Has everybody had a chance to read that? So we'll start with the budget for the county clerk's office. And Commissioner Kirkland, unless anybody has any special request or anything on salaries, we're just skipping that for now until we have our certified appraised values. So we'd start with line item number three-ten for office supplies. And we can go over this line by line if everybody wants to, but basically you can see that everything, she left everything about the same. She did reduce her telephone line item from twenty-two hundred dollars down to twelve hundred dollars. And I don't know if anyone has any recommendation on that, but it looks like as of the six months ended March the thirty-first, they had used four hundred and sixty-one dollars out of that line item. We might could decrease a little more, maybe to a thousand dollars. Do you have any, do you know how that's going?
She's not gonna want that, but I mean, you know.
Well, I'm just wondering, do you, do you know if
Well, we're already over in office supplies, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sure.
So, I mean, what we have now really isn't enough.
Okay. Where are y'all seeing the big problem in, in the office supplies? What is it that you're using a lot of?
The folders.
The Monel folders?
Criminal folders, probate folders, civil folders. I mean, I think once we start e-filing, that should take care of some of it, but I mean, those folders are expensive. I mean, we've already cut back on the, the big book ledgers that we used to have to order, so we don't have to order those anymore. But I mean, we have to have the VBS paper that comes from Austin, all those folders. You know.
So do we need to look at increasing the office supply line item?
I think if, I mean, I don't know, that's up to her, but I, I think she'd be okay. I don't know.
Do you know what you spent last year?
I don't.
Okay.
You can tell in your budget this year through eight months, you've almost spent your budget.
Yeah, ninety-two percent of the, the end of March.
According to last year's budget, seventy-five, seventy on office supplies.
And when does the e-filing start?
It's mandatory in July first, is it?
Yes ma'am.
We already started doing a little bit, but we're still having to make the folders. Once it becomes mandatory, everybody gets on e-filing, then hopefully that's gonna slow down with the folders.
Honestly Commissioner, I don't see that changing by the end of this budget year. I think everything will still get, in fact, it'll go up, because now instead of the attorneys bringing in printed work, they're gonna e-file it and the county clerk's office is gonna print it and make a folder, at least for the foreseeable future. I mean, the goal is to get to where it's paperless, but
It's not gonna be like the judge said.
It'll never be a hundred percent paperless, I don't believe.
Well, with the way that we're, we're trying to conduct business now, I mean, it would be wise to, I think, budget what they've used in the past. And then especially, I mean, my understanding is y'all are, y'all are here in court really, really well, two district judges and county office. I mean, got a lot of work going on.
And if I'm not mistaken, we went over in office supplies last year, it seems like.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, if it was seventy-five hundred.
You went over fifteen hundred dollars. It appears here that on this worksheet she has, she's reducing her salary by thirty-one hundred dollars. I would say moving at least fifteen hundred of that into office supplies. I don't know how the rest of the court feels. If she spent seventy-five hundred last year, then a fifteen hundred dollar increase would put it back at seventy-five.
What do you see the reduction in salaries?
Yeah.
The total over here, from budgeted here, I come up with thirty-one hundred. She's cutting five hundred out of miscellaneous, six hundred out of copyright.
Out of operations.
Okay.
I'm with you. So on the office supplies, do you think we need to amend that to seventy-five hundred? Is that your recommendation? Seventy-six hundred?
Yeah.
And then on the telephone, would you be okay if we went to one thousand on that?
I don't think she's gonna, I mean, 'cause she's already cut it a thousand. And with us having, you know, to do a lot of calling, we, I know for a fact, we use our own cell phones a lot of times if it's long distance, 'cause we don't try to make long distance calls. So.
What I was going by is y'all had used four hundred and sixty-one dollars for the first six months. And if y'all used around five hundred to six hundred dollars for the next six months, that would be right out of about a thousand.
They used fifteen hundred and eighteen dollars last year.
Okay. So we better leave it where it's at then.
Does it show the prior year too?
On, on the regular budget, it doesn't, it doesn't on here, but yes.
Twelve hundred and eleven hundred.
Yeah. It was eleven fifty, twenty-twelve, and twelve fifteen, twenty-thirteen.
So they're right at twelve hundred.
Okay. We better leave that line item the way it's proposed. On the travel expense at thirty-four hundred, does anybody have any questions on that?
No.
I know that it shows that you use zero the first six months, but a lot of y'all's schools are in the last six months, so that's why it's at zero.
We're fixed to start going to school a lot, and there's a lot of schools she wants to bring me to sometimes that she can't afford to, just like probate school. She signed herself up for probate. I will go, but I don't get the book or anything like that. We'll share.
Right.
Because it's just too expensive. She, she doesn't have the travel in there, and not only that, during elections, she uses her own vehicle and doesn't turn in the mileage a lot of times. So I know that the travel, she's gonna need that.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, what, would we want to send an elected official and a chief deputy? Oh, I mean, if it's like one, one major conference a year, that way they don't have to if they decide they wanna pay for it, they can, but they don't have to.
Well, I think we have enough in there for that. Is that right or wrong?
I don't know. I just know she's, you know, she doesn't want to cut her expense. I don't think she can afford to cut her expenses.
But not only that, but I think if you're gonna go and be a benefit to the county, if, if we sign you up and you are gonna get all the resources that she's getting, you are gonna be able to get the book. I appreciate us nickeling diamond, but if we're gonna move forward, my way of thinking is, I mean
I mean, one, like, okay, like last year, we had two probate books, 'cause she was supposed to go, but something happened and she couldn't. So we had two probate books, so this year she just signed herself up just in case something happened. Probate school's next week. She's not gonna be able to make it. So, but I'm still going, so I'm gonna use her probate book. And she doesn't really need the book, 'cause she gives it to me anyway.
Right.
And then I can share with the probate that I'm clerk, that I'm gonna train.
Okay.
So we're, I think.
You okay?
Okay.
On printing, it shows a proposed budget of thirty-four hundred, but y'all haven't used any in that line item this year. Is there some printing that y'all will be doing the last six months, or do you know?
I don't know.
It didn't show anything last year.
Well, elections wouldn't come out of, the printing for ballots, that wouldn't come out of that, no.
Okay.
Question mark with that.
Okay.
On which one?
Printing.
Printing.
Now, microfilming, I don't think we're still microfilming. It's called something, is it called something else now, or are we still microfilming?
Well, we're scanning, and LGS is doing that for us a lot, so.
Is that where that expense comes from?
Indexing, I think so. I think I seen that. It came out of our microfilming.
Is that, is that number thirty thousand, nine sixty-three? Is that LGS? Is that basically what that is?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
And what'd they lose once you noticed?
Fifty thousand, seven hundred.
And year before, seventy-six.
I can say we are
Yes.
A couple, a few months behind paying them. So.
That's what it was actual, the years before, so that's actually what they gotta pay.
Angela, do you think that line item needs to be changed to be, bring it up to date instead of the microfilming?
The title?
Yes ma'am.
Or would you like the description to read?
I don't wanna change it without Glenda's approval.
Does, does a hundred percent of that go to LGS? Not sure.
I know they're expensive, so.
Do you know Angela, where that expense, is it all going to LGS, or do you know?
No, I do not know. I didn't bring a detail of her line item.
Buzzing. I'm sorry.
Last year it was fifty thousand, how much?
Fifty thousand, seven hundred.
What about the prior year?
Seven-six thousand, fifty.
And you said y'all about two months, but you got a
Two or three. And the reason that being is when Sherry Cook was here, she paid, voucher'd it out. I did not know she did. And when she up and quit us, well, I didn't find it till months later. So we're like three, four months behind.
So they're probably gonna hit it again. Possible. Yes sir.
I think we put a question by that one as well. On copier rentals, that's been reduced from thirty-six hundred to three, three thousand, and that looks like it's right on track to me. Computer expense has been left the same at one thousand dollars. However, y'all've already surpassed it this year by sixty-four dollars. Do you think there's enough in that line item?
Yes, so they used twelve forty-five.
Which one?
Computer expense.
Yeah, they went over two hundred and forty-five dollars last year.
And then that, that was at thirty-one fifty-two the year before?
That was twelve, this thirteen, seven hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Thirteen.
The year before, though, it was three grand. Those y'all probably upgrading computers and stuff the year before. I think we should increase the computer expense line item to fifteen hundred. That's what I was thinking. But I'm hoping that the printing and the microfilming can come down to more than cover that. But again, we'll wait and talk to Glenda about that.
Okay.
I don't know if this is a good time to bring it up or not, Judge, but it just don't come to my mind.
No, that's a good time.
With a computer expense on each, each department budget, has anybody ever looked to see if it would behoove us to have a I T person with the expenses?
That's one thing I would like to do in the future. I just don't think this year's gonna be a good year to look at it, but, so the answer to your question is no, that has not been researched, but that is something that I think we should look at in the future.
I agree, especially with cyber security being an issue.
On miscellaneous, it's at three thousand, down from thirty-five hundred. Does anyone have any concerns or comments regarding that?
No.
And then equipment expenses, do you know Connie what y'all pay out of that line item? 'Cause so far this year, there's a zero, zero expense, but maybe y'all have something that comes up in the last part of the year that y'all pay a lot out of there.
I don't know. That's, that'd have to be a question mark. I don't know what she would pay out of that.
Only come out of equipment expenses?
Yes sir.
Yeah.
'Cause there wasn't anything the years before.
Really?
I'm sure at one time there probably was. It may, may have been when we first got on the LGS, there might have been some equipment expenses related to it.
Two thousand thirteen, they had eighty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong, I'm sorry. Okay, that's gonna be the voting machines.
I was wondering.
Remember they came in and gave us the, you remember that? They came in and set up?
Wouldn't that come under this other budget?
Ah, that should would.
Last year they only used seven hundred and thirty-seven.
Seven dollars, yeah.
I bet that it, see, I was wondering if it was the election machines too, but
Probably programming and getting ready for each ballot.
Upgrades.
All right, and then the law books stays the same. Y'all still buying law books?
A few.
On the county clerk preservation fees, there's no, no proposed budget from, from Ms. Austin on this, so I'm assuming that she just wanted to leave everything like it is? Does any have, if everyone would just kinda look over that and see if there's any questions?
That's an item that this court has no control over anyway, though, isn't it? That those funds have to be used for, for that purpose. I mean, they can't be brought back into the general budget either.
Yeah, they're designated in the budget for a specific, I don't know what they are, but
Well, she's using two salaries out of, out of that, so I don't think we have any control over that.
There is a line item called microfilm upgrade that I again, I guess gotta be some other type of equipment, since we're not microfilming anymore. I don't, I'm assuming we're not.
Well, I mean, we're scanning and having those old books indexed so that everything gets on the computer.
Yes ma'am.
And I'm not sure, you know.
But maybe that's for, maybe that line item is for some scanners or
The microfilm?
An upgrade of, yeah, what says microfilm upgrade. So I'm thinking that's gotta be for some other type of equipment besides microfilm.
Okay.
On the, on the budget for election expenses, in her letter, she said she needed fifty thousand for election expenses. It looks like last year's budget was sixty thousand, so it'll be reduced by ten thousand. Now Angela, does that all go into that miscellaneous item? Is that where, is that where that should go?
We will have to research and see what's coded there.
So it's gonna be a pretty good return from that budget.
Ten thousand.
Forty thousand dollars will come back in this year maybe.
Well, it was, so when it last year it was sixty, and this year, the following year it'll be fifty, so it'll be ten.
Well, I'm saying this year, though, if
Right.
Sixty, and this was not a
Right.
Big election.
If that's the end of the expenses, yes sir.
It's gonna be forty thousand.
I know in September, they'll be getting ready for the November election, and, 'cause I know there's two weeks in September that they'll be working on programming and everything.
That'll be, that'll come out in the new
So that'll come out of, come out of the new budget.
Yeah. Well, it'll come out either place, but next year will be a general election, but that, in fact, next year it'll be two elections, primary and a general.
Yes sir.
Well, I'm saying it's probably this year is gonna be, what, forty thousand? She may have already taken ten thousand here, so it'll be thirty thousand dollars I thought it's gonna be.
Yes sir. It should go back into the general fund, right around thirty.
Okay, I got a question. This is gonna be a pretty big election year, 'cause it's presidential election. So my question is, why would we budget less on a major election than we would on a, like a governor's election?
The only thing I can think of is maybe she's thinking about this year, you know, with it not being a warm body so much.
Okay.
That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay.
That's maybe gonna cover part of it out of this budget for that presidential election.
Okay. And so, can we recap?
Yes sir.
All right, so the questions that we have, oh, okay, so for election expenses, we're looking at the possibility of reducing by ten thousand, according to her request. Then a possibility of thirty thousand going back into the general fund?
I think that's just a question we're gonna need to ask, 'cause like I said, I know she's got two weeks in September. Uh, the second and third week of September, she's planning to, to spend those two weeks program, programming and getting everything ready for the November third election. We'll still be in this budget, so I don't know if that's coming out of here or, or if it'll
Okay.
While, while they're bringing that up, Ms. Door.
Okay.
At the end of each budget year, other than road and bridge carryover, any carryovers within the general fund, does that all go to contingency?
Yes.
Do we ever, do we ever know, do we ever know what the amount is? 'Cause
What you do is you look at your revenue versus your expenditures, and the difference between your revenue and your expenditures, that's what goes into contingency.
So when you're, when you're figuring, the report you gave us a while ago, when you're figuring all that, our carryover from last budget is included in revenue and expenditures?
Um, okay, repeat. What I gave you here is off the audit report in the general fund.
Right, but my question is, each year, we set the budget. But as far as I know, unless somebody, I don't, I hope I'm not confusing y'all, but as far as I know, we never know what was put back into from last year's budget.
From another department.
Okay.
From, from the general fund.
Okay.
Other than road and bridge, we do, we have to get that approved through the court.
Well, it's in your audit report, but we, what we haven't done is compared audit report to audit report.
So sometimes when we get our outside audit, and we're thinking we have this amount in contingency and it's higher, that could be a reason.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's not a breaking reason, 'cause that
No, it couldn't be the major reason.
That doesn't happen that much. When you take road and bridge out, the rest of them come back in pretty close.
Right. I mean, if you think about road and bridge plus salaries, that's
Well, you'd have the energy, ended, ended healthcare budget, a lot of that is not spent, so that comes back into the general fund. And then there's a, just a few others like this election that will have an amount, whatever that ends up being, and a few others here and there. But most of the departments, their budgets are so small, there's not any leftover, or very little if any. So we were recapping the, yeah.
So then, the other questions we have is on office supplies, whether or not to increase that? Is that correct?
Actually, I think we did increase it to seventy-six hundred.
I thought y'all were.
Okay, to seventy-six hundred.
Yes sir.
And then, printing, we got a question on whether or not they need that.
We can maybe decrease that, so.
Right. And then the, I got copier, copier rentals? No, co- uh
Equipment expenses.
Like the microfilming line item, we have two questions there, what to call that, if, if, if it needs to be changed at all, and then also if that line item can be reduced any. And then the other line item that we had a question about was the equipment expenses. And then we increased the computer expense line item to fifteen hundred, excuse me, fifteen hundred.
Judge, after each one of these sections over, do we have a list of what the net is for that department, pluses or minus, as we start looking at this budget as we go along?
We can, I can put that together.
Sure.
I haven't yet, but I'd be glad to do that.
Just gotta see where we are as we go along.
It's a good idea. All right, anything further on the county clerk's budget?
Y'all all got a, one of these where it shows how much we made last year?
Yes ma'am.
Or took in.
Took in.
The microfilm upgrade, we're gonna check into that too.
Yes sir.
Taking that mega scanner.
So we covered A and C. We also covered the election expenses during that. And now we'll move to the district clerk. Ms. Hogg is here. Everybody got a letter from Ms. Hogg?
Yeah.
Does everybody have the, Ms. Hogg did hers a little different. Not that that's bad, I'm just saying.
Sorry.
Just gotta get used to looking at something a little different. She has two columns. She has a, the regular column that has the proposed budget. She has another column that says requested twenty-sixteen budget. So would you like to discuss the salary proposal that you submitted first?
Yes, I did. Excuse me. I'm sure y'all have this page where it shows the twenty-fifteen budget, and then the twenty-sixteen, I just, I know money's gonna be tight, and of course, I wouldn't be a very good boss if I didn't stand up here and, and, you know, ask for something for the girls that are really outstanding and have been overlooked prior years. So I know that all that's, you know, depending on how things work out. But we do have some girls that are really hard workers and have been at level, at the step zero for many, many years. And I know that Glenda and I had also talked about our step zero pay, because ours, I think, is the same as, maybe as Ms. Stevens. The full-time pay step zero is less than some of our part-time personnel that we have in other offices. And I know when interviewing Is less than some of our part-time personnel that we have in other offices. And I know when interviewing, um. They, at times, they kinda, they tend to wait to see what's out there, like if another department has an opening. Because they know that's gonna pay better. And, um, there are some full-time step zeros that are, are like that as well. And our offices are very busy and, and they do work very hard. So I would just like to point that out, that in the future when we, um. When the commissioners look at, at salary, that. It's just, it's kind of up and down and that number goes down. And, um. I don't know, I think it, I think it's an incentive to keep, you know, good employees here.
Can I just ask, what is your longest tenured employee? How long has that person been working in the district clerk's office?
Um, since oh three.
Alright, so, it's, uh, twelve years by my Lumberton math, is that right? And she's on step zero?
No, that, that's my chief deputy, she's on a different step. But Brandy is, um, sorry, I shouldn't have used any names. Um, she's been there since twenty ten and she is on step zero. But, uh.
Does everyone on the court know how the step scale is supposed to work? After so many, after, uh, is it? I better get clarification, after two years, is it supposed to go up to, to step one or?
I was told it, it did not go up unless the department had requested, so.
I, I can say this, cause I've been on the court for a long time, we scrapped that step about ten years ago. Step hadn't been used in at least. Ten years, been so long. We had a lady, we put all this together, because Harden County had no personnel policies. Uh, Lady Lamar came out and worked with us and we went through all the step and stuff and it was a real good program. The only problem was, we didn't have the money to institute. And so after a period of time, we quit, even looking at it. Because people were referring back to it and, you know, it did have that you should, needed to move up in the steps.
Yes sir.
But, we didn't have any money to move people up in steps, so we just basically about ten years ago just scrapped it. And I guess, court needs to probably officially scrap that, I thought we had, but it keeps being referred to, I guess we still have the.
I can tell you that, uh, the human resources department references it often when I'm talking to them about what to pay certain people. Or when they're talking to me about what to pay certain people in his reference.
It was included in my packet.
That is something we need either.
Yeah, because we, we have not, we have not followed it because we haven't had the money to follow it.
You know what I'd like to see? What the judge was saying, the, the tenure. And then the last time they were given a step raise. Because I, I do think that's important. You know, we, we constantly talk about trying to get people up to the right pay. But you know, if you're, if you're stuck in a position and never get an advancement. Then you're gonna start, you're gonna start looking elsewhere, is what I think. And so what I'd like to see is, you know, for instance. When I went in precinct two, I realized my secretary hadn't had a step increase in seven years. You know, and, uh, I thought that was too long, too long of a time. So we gave her a step increase. And so. What I'd like to see is, is the amount of tenure, and I think maybe we should review this as a court as we go along. And what is acceptable, you know, I know sheriff's office gets certificate pay. And what have you, and to say that other departments, because they're not law enforcement. Do, do not need some type of professional pay is not fair. Just like a CDL driver, he can't even afford to get a ticket, cause he can't take defensive driving. And so. But our requirements are to hire somebody with a CDL. And so, you know, we're giving out certificate pays and different stuff like that for those departments. If she's gonna have a professional work crew, working with attorneys and everything else, then, you know, what, what, what is the county willing to pay for, for professionalism? Are we willing to pay more than Walmart, McDonald's? You know? So I would like to see that.
Well, and my point, you know, also is it starts at twelve ninety and other, in other departments, they can, can make more than twelve ninety. And so, I may have an employee that's been with me for five years that may want to go to. You know, another department because it starts at thirteen fifty. So I have an investment in them and I don't wanna lose them. But I just wanted to point that out, that that, um, problem has.
Well, it doesn't follow that fears, we just.
I know, I know, I know.
How to fix the problem.
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Kirk, I think this is something that we should look at. And if the court done away with a step. Pay, which that's, I was under the impression we did, then I don't think we should even reference it. We should have a set rate for clerks. All across the board. In other words, what's good for one department's gonna good, be good for all. Uh.
That's, that's sort of the way it should be.
I would like to see, uh, merit raises, raises based on quality of work, if we could afford that. But it's not fair and I, I'm guilty of it myself, whenever I brought a foreman in. The foreman that retired was at a level right here, so I had the money in my budget to bring my new foreman in above of what somebody would start off at zero. That's not fair to the other departments.
Right.
I did it, because I had the money and he deserves it. But just like she's saying, you know, these clerks deserve the same thing, so I think that's something we should look at.
Well, you know, with that, I do, I do like the, uh, possibility of department heads doing evaluations on their employee. Cause you have some who work really, really hard, that deserve the raise and you have some that don't carry their load. And when everybody gets the same across the board raise, then there's no incentive for the guys to work harder.
I do evaluations every year, uh, and I think that's a good thing too. And I wish the county had money to have a merit raise system, but. Like I said, this is something we should look at, so, money provided.
But it's something that was pointed out when we got into this, is that. We had steps. And. We set, we set out to do evaluations each year. But basically the evaluations ended up being whether you stayed or left, because there was no funds. You know, and, and year after year, if there are no funds, if the court provides no funds for step increases. Then you're just playing a game. And it became apparent about ten years ago. Seven, eight, ten, I don't remember when it was, Shirley may remember better than I do, there were no funds. You know, we were cutting budgets. And it was a chore to get three percent. And several times it was proposed that there not be anything. And I think this is gonna be one of those years. So, you know, the court needs to officially now. At the time, we went through each department, we put different steps and stuff. It was based on what this Lamar professor recommended. And it was sort of like industry. Where that works fine if you've got money to do it.
Right.
But like here. Clerks, in my opinion, should be the same through every department. It'd be the same in Dana's as it would be in Shirley's as it would be in Glenda's. It would cut down a lot of the confusion.
Exactly.
And, uh.
And every one of these department heads are coming in with letters requesting pay increases for their people. I would do the same thing if I was a department head. Every one of them deserved it.
Well, I, a- as, as commissioner, I would do the same thing in my road and bridge, except. Found out six, seven, eight years ago, however, whatever time, it was futile, spending a lot of, lot of work. For something that wasn't gonna happen.
But, my, my, my input into this is. Yeah, you, you, not all clerks in every department do the same things. Every, every department's different. Whether it's our clerks or, or her clerks, they all have different tasks and different jobs. We have to look around and look at the clerks, what they can make somewhere else. We're gonna, eh, you, you, we're gonna cut off our noses and spite our faces when you start cutting clerks' pay or making them all do the same. Cause they'll go find another job in a, in a legal firm and make more money.
But they already are.
Yeah, well, you understand what I'm saying though. I mean, it's already to a point, we're, 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 we're bottom, bottom barreling on our, our salaries anyway. We know this. You know, we, we've got our salaries up pretty decent over the last few years. But, but still, we're hurting on our salaries competing with anybody. Whether, like you said, whether it's McDonald's or whoever. You know, we, we've got to pay our people, to keep people, to have good people. And if you have a multiple turnover, you're fixing to experience turnover just from retirements. When you start having turnovers and you start losing people, it hurts. It's, it's hard enough to get people trained to, to do the jobs, much less. Trying to bring someone in at a low pay. And, you know, that's just my input. And I don't, I, I don't think that we should departmentalize everybody as making the same pay here or making the same pay there. Cause everybody does the same thing.
I think it would be fair and, and help the morale though, if we had a. If we had, if we're gonna go away from the step system, if we had a standardized system of clerks. Light equipment operators, heavy equipment operators.
I agree a hundred percent with what you say, but.
A secretary.
We're not industry, we're government.
No, and I understand that too.
To do that, so if someone coming in knows what the salary's gonna be and there's gonna be no step increases other than. The leisure of the court, three percent raise or whatever each year, and they have an understanding of that, I think it would be a lot easier than. One department getting adjustments and the other ones not. It, that, I mean, that's my.
Well, and I, and I don't disagree with that either. But what I'm saying is, not every clerk is different. Her clerks are different than ours. Uh, Shirley's clerks are different than ours, they do different things. Some of them have to have different qualifications in their jobs to be those clerks. So if we make them all a standardized pay, it's not gonna be fair to some. And it's gonna be unfair to others.
Are you?
Well, yeah.
Well, you won't have somebody from the district clerk's office wanting to come to work for the treasurer's office either. I mean, you know what I'm saying, for a pay increase.
So they, so they all make fourteen bucks an hour?
Let me interject right here. The reason the step and some of these things different pay for a clerk, say, in an accounts payable office. And in a human resources office in business works, is because you can maintain secrecy. In county government, everything that goes into this budget is public information.
Yes sir.
Everybody in every department knows what everybody else makes. And so then you need Solomon to determine, is this clerk in county clerk's office worth more than this clerk in Shirley's office? They may be. But who's gonna make this determination? And in a public entity, it is very, very difficult. And that's what, when we went through this deal with this Lamar professor. I came from industry. People knew not what my clerks made as opposed to what somebody else's clerks made. They could talk amongst themselves, but it was not official. And I said this wouldn't work. It has not worked. We abandoned it after, with the first, or second review came up. We abandoned it. It was tough to just to get three percent across the board. And for the last five years, as legislature changed the oil and gas formula and we started on this downward trend in mineral losses. It has been a battle each year to get inflation for the employees. And so that's the reason, as I look at all this, and I think when this court sits here in July. I think the court's gonna be faced with a difficult decision. Do we give any raise or do we raise taxes? And even though all of this sounds good, we're gonna be right back to the same old point that every year we made the decision based upon. And so step raises are really just misleading. The department heads and the elected officials and the people that figure these things. End up believing, hey, I can come to this court, present my case for what my people need, to be fair. But it's not gonna happen.
One of the studies, you know, pay was about the third or fourth reason that people worked for somebody. And I think personally, on the morale, just my five years in office, the morale has a huge battle. Based on perceptions of one group getting paid more than another group, one group. I mean, we, you know, you, you think back, last two budgets, had the issue in the auditor's office, you got the issue upstairs. Uh, with people being upset of one group getting five percent, one group getting three percent. And personally, I plan on serving as long as the people keep putting me in office. And, but what I'd like to see is the morale come up. And. This body can do something about it by maintaining some type of equalization. To where we're not pitting one group against another group or a certain department, is, they know they're gonna get this. And then you have another department going, well, we've been a step zero five years, we've been a step zero six years. And then you lose a six, seven-year employee to, you know, a non-governmental agency or something like that. I, I think they'll work for the county. And I think they'll work for the retirement and all of that, if this body can do what they can. To take away their ability to pit each other against each other. And I do think like having a standardization of clerks. Operators, because then it even takes, it even takes the, the politics out of it. Of, uh, of, uh, trying to micromanage it, massage it whenever you say, well, here's the rates, here's what we do. And then that comes out of it. And then hopefully, there'll be a day when we can go to evaluations. You have a minimum of say a percent and a half or two percent and a high four percent. The department heads know they're gonna average out to about three percent. Everybody's not gonna get the same raise in the department because everybody's not a superstar. But you'll have one or two, and then at that point, you can designate, but based off of that elected official. Doing what they need to do by managing their office. Where they can look at the person making the four percent increase and. And they know that they deserve four percent. And the one getting up, one that had two percent, no, they don't deserve four percent, cause they don't do as much as this clerk. Or they're chronically late, or chronically over on their lunch hour, whatever it is, you know. And, and then it just tightens up management all the way around. And then, and then you could delineate from there, but have the standardized pay, starting out and, and moving forward. And that might be the way to get off the steps, I don't know.
Well, I apologize. I think we're off the steps. I think, I think we're off.
That's what I just learned.
We, we haven't done it, we haven't done it in ten years. So I think we're off, I, we just, we just haven't admitted we're off, I had to make the pitch policy. And like Chris is talking about, I do think that like at road and bridge, everybody should be comparable. Now, there'll always be complaints, because I've got people working in mind. That we have lots of roads. And they look over maybe precinct, they work without many roads and they say, I work harder. And I tell them, I can't do a thing about that, you hired out, you knew what the job paid. And I will fight and try to do my best to get you a cost of living raise. And I think any employee that we hire here in Harden County. That we have to be honest with them. There is no step raise. We're gonna try to give you a cost of living raise each year, but that's basically where this county's gonna be, that's where this county's been for years now. And Wayne and I sat with, uh, an angel. With the Alex. And I asked him that time to look down the road at oil and gas, because where we're sitting today for the next three years. We're looking at six hundred and twenty-eight thousand this year. Next year, we're gonna be looking at decline again, not another six hundred and twenty-eight, you can't take that same one twice. But we're gonna be looking at a decline. And we're gonna be looking at increased expenses. And hopefully, it's my hope, we will have added three percent, two percent, whatever, to employee salaries. So that's gonna flow on year, year after year. So what's tough this year is gonna be tougher next year, because if we take three hundred out of the contingency this year, that three hundred thousand won't be there next year. It'll have to be taken out of something else, or a tax raise. So I don't think there's any reason to kid ourselves that we're fixing to make any big adjustments here real soon. We're gonna be treading water for survival.
Can you, can, I'm sorry.
That's where, that's where Harden County is. Now, if something great would happen to us, like it's talking about BP. Somebody, uh, Esther made a statement one, BP said they might do a five hundred wells here. So I, I, I believe that's a pipe dream.
Well, precinct two.
Across the United States.
Oh, in precinct.
But, but, but not in Harden County, we will take your money, Chris.
Right, I know you will.
But, the truth is, we're a suburban county that's dealing with the overflow out of Omaha for various reasons. With where we are, we're better off than some other counties. But we're not fixing to make any drastic changes here. If we had money, we would be going through this line, thing line by line, looking for ten dollars here and twenty dollars there.
That's correct.
So I do think this court needs to be very honest with its employees. There are no employees. Here a few years ago, I had roads to run it between Orange County, Jefferson County, and Harden County, because this is the regional planning commission we're all in. And it's also the same shopping area that we're all in. Harden County is across the board, behind each one of these counties. Now, Jefferson County sits there with fifteen times the evaluations that we do. And five times the amount of people. And they're fixing to get another nineteen billion when all this refining expansion is over. So, there's no way that, that we're gonna be able to. And Orange County, they're a little bit better than we are, probably not much. But they pay higher salaries because they were in the higher salaries when they got, when they had the good times. Now they're trying to figure out how to pay in the bad times. But.
We'll see what we're doing, we're just on a different scale.
That's right. There's no employee in Harden County, in my opinion, that is getting paid what they deserve. A commissioner in Jefferson County is making about a hundred and five thousand dollars. And they say, okay, Jefferson County's big, a lot more headaches. No, they got less headaches.
Right.
Because they, they cut out more in one commissioner's budget. Because they, they cut out more in one commissioner's budget. Tighten up than our whole Rothenbridge deal is.
That's the truth.
We're fighting a tough battle up here, but we gotta fight it with what we've got. And I do believe, and I fought this each year, is that if we do not at least keep up with inflation for our employees, we have got to do that. But that was a battle last year, if you remember. It was a big battle. And, uh, but we would like to do better. But I don't see any possibility of doing any better than three percent, two percent, whatever.
Right.
And hope we can do that.
Do you mind getting like a list? You don't have to use her name, just employee A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever, and then like tenure? And then time and pay grade?
For my department?
Yeah, just, just for, I'd like to know, just to have the knowledge of how long, you know, I mean, because I think they ought at least to get, get a half a day Friday off of pay if they've been here ten years and never got away, you should know.
Well, Connor, you just told Glenda I did bring it up. Because she would have done this had I not been here.
Sure.
To fill in that spot.
I, I appreciate y'all bringing it up, but I think we've been operating on some false pretenses.
Well, if, if the step, if we're on another step, then we need to destroy all those things.
That's, I agree.
And it keeps being brought up that we've got steps when we do not have steps.
Could I say something?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I think that Glenda, Ms., uh, Dana and myself agree that we feel like we're the stepping stone offices for the courthouse. They get a foot in the door through our offices and then they see another position over here that pays more. And so they apply. And I know I had some to just recently apply.
You lost one to me.
I lost one to you. And, and we just feel like we're spinning our wheels when we're training them per se. And then they're leaving us to go to another department. And it's very, um, frustrating. It's very, um, you know, it, you know what I told you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
Can't blame them. I mean.
Right.
Don't, don't blame them at all.
I don't blame them. I don't blame them, but it certainly makes, uh, for a disappointing day for us.
It is.
And I think we sympathize too, really.
It's a problem that we have, that we've had for a while that needs to be fixed and I'd like to see it fixed. It just won't happen overnight. It didn't come overnight and so it's not gonna be easy to fix. Unless we had a lot of money, if we did, we could fix it today.
Well, I have one that's been there ten years that's still at starting pay. Ten years.
And I'm kind of of the opinion that maybe we should look at, uh, whether it's been scrapped or not, uh, and, and look at the step pay and try to get everybody up that way and maybe, uh, forego the, the across the board percentage rates. But, uh, that's gonna be difficult as well.
Well, I certainly appreciate what the court has been doing.
Um, and I, I totally agree with that, but I'm, I've always been in favor of longevity pay anyway. I don't think you should be stuck in, like you said, you're stuck somewhere. It's not, you're gonna be looking for another job. You're gonna be looking for something else and especially if you've been here for many years, then you're gonna be looking for something, go somewhere else to make more money.
But she's got one that's been here ten years and probably some others, and she's got one that's been here five years and probably some others.
I've been here twelve.
And she's been here twelve years. And you're used to it, starting pay, all you've gotten is the percentage, the cost of living raise?
Right.
I got one, been here twenty years, by the least one I've got's been here for September eight, most I'm fifteen. The reason they stay is because they don't have to drive into Beaumont for a, a job. And that's the reason a lot of them here in Harden County stay is they don't have to drive into Beaumont, fight that traffic and stuff. I mean, it's no secret.
But we're very thankful that they do.
If you sing the national anthem, we could probably get you a step raise.
Huh?
If you'd sing the national anthem, we could probably get you a step raise.
I'll sing it. No, and we get fourteen paid holidays. I mean, that's a good benefit. Well, we have good benefits. That's what I term my life. We have good benefits.
And I'll say this while we're here amongst friends. Last year we got down on this court and the word kinda got pitted out that it was either, if we gave a raise to the employees, it was gonna cause a tax increase. And that is totally the, the worst thing that can go out is that if the employees get a raise, it's causing a tax increase.
Right.
Tax increase should be at the overall budget, not laid on the employees.
Right, I agree with that.
We've had this conversation about two months now.
That's what I was thinking.
But we, we, we got a new judge this year that, uh, we'll, we'll see.
He's Peter Witt.
Mandatory e-filing is coming really quick. And, um, I'm hoping that I can get two computers out of my computer budget that I have now. But I've been waiting on a bid from Casey. I still don't have that bid, so I could not, um, determine if that amount will cover for this year. So I just wanna point out that I did leave that the same. Do you wanna go line by line?
I, I would recommend also Star Graphics. They have been very good for us, uh, as far as getting bids.
Computers?
Yeah, uh, not only do they do printers and, uh, copiers, but, but they do computers. And, uh, that's where my office computer come from. And then this year, when we had to upgrade Gina's computer, it was about ten years old. They beat everybody's quote.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
You may also check with ECP computers. I think Misty has a contact with them.
Okay.
And she can get a quote from them as well.
I have two that need to be upgraded.
And she also has, uh, we have a, uh, we have a, uh, we can purchase off the state contractor Dell computers that she, uh, has been purchasing. I know that some of the JP's have gotten them. Uh, I've got one.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on my letter? Do I need to explain anything within that?
I don't think so. Do y'all have any questions? On the telephone line item, I see you decreased it quite a bit.
Yes. I've only used, um, a small amount. I, I usually will use my cellphone if I know I'm calling on something that's gonna take a while.
Travel expense, you increased it. I just was, uh, wanting to see if you, and it may be in your letter. I read it over the weekend.
Um, the first school I went to, I did take Tracy, um, the chief deputy. She's not ever been to a conference and it did help her tremendously. She was very appreciative.
Over what?
I believe the registration was a hundred and seventy-five. And, um, she did get some meals, some meal money, but what we didn't use, we turned back in. And then, um, I went to another one and I took my criminal clerk because it was a lot of criminal, uh, information. Um, we did not get a hotel room. We stayed with my sons, um, my son and daughter-in-law. And we, um, I only turned in for mileage because the judiciary has refunded us on the mileage. And they, on the original one, they refunded the hotel partially and mileage. So all that money has been turned back in to Ms. Debbie. And, um, you know.
You know, let me say this, I, I commend you for doing that. You know, there, uh, a lot of elected officials and employees make that sacrifice. And so just as a member of Commissioner's Court, you know, I know your son was glad to have his mother there. But, you know, it did put a burden on him and it took a burden off the county.
Yeah.
Of paying that event, uh, that expense. So I commend you for that. And I hope the people of Harden County, if they watch this video, see the type of sacrifice that our elected officials make to serve the people. So I appreciate that.
There have been a, um, there's a, another seminar this summer. I'm not going to go. One, the hotel is just outrageous. And I did find a cheaper one, but it's still outrageous and they're wasting two afternoons. And so, um, I'm not gonna go to that one, but I would like to go to one in the fall. I'm still learning and I know there's a lot of information for me there. Um, so that was the reason I wanted the increase. It's just costing more.
Okay. On the, uh, equipment rentals, it looks like you, uh, decreased that line item by eight hundred dollars. Is that gonna leave you enough?
Two hundred.
Uh, from three thousand to twenty-two hundred, is that right?
Oh, on equipment rentals?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not sure. Um, this is my copier that I have now. And that's what it runs, is the twenty-two hundred.
Do you know when that lease renews?
I think I've got two and a half years, three years.
Okay, so we're safe at this amount?
Because I looked at upgrading, excuse me, and, um, understood for Misty it was gonna be three hundred dollars more. But I've got a call into Jim to double check to make sure she and I didn't get crossed up because that seemed like an awful lot. Um, I wanted to upgrade to where we had, um, scanner on that machine as well. Um, as most of you know, we have a lot of files that need to be, uh, scanned across the street. And, um, putting a plan in place to try to accomplish that. I don't wanna have to move all those to the new building. Um, a lot of it can be scanned and, um, done away with. A lot of them, the retention's passed. Um, so I did not up that, that expense at all. However, I think you'll notice in my, um, letter where I had asked about using my twenty fifteen budget under the employee that, um, expense that's not been used. If there's any way possible, we could get new scanners for the desk. And I did go ahead and include a larger scanner because if I can't get it on the copier, this scanner would suffice. So that was a side note. I did decrease the equipment expenses a little bit.
Once you start doing the scanning again, won't you need to have somebody, an extra person brought in to do that?
I would, I would like to have a part-time person, um.
Will that payment come out of your preservation fees?
No, that would come out. I, I kept it, uh, under salary for next year.
Okay.
My preservation fees, um, my LGS comes out of my preservation's fees. And that's, um, between LGS and the storage building that I'm paying rent on. That comes to almost like thirty thousand. And then you'll see where I've added in a backup. I talked with Glenda about this last week. We've learned that our system is being backed up only with a tape in-house. It is not backed up at another location. And she and I can split seventeen ninety-nine. So that's why I have this option over here where I have a nine hundred dollars for backup. Because that would, um, be backed up to a cloud. So if something were to happen here, heaven forbid, um, you know, flood or fire or whatever, we would not lose our data. Right now, we share a, a risk there.
The, uh, twenty-eight, two seventy-two to CMS, is that the LGS?
Yes.
Okay. And that's your, that's your records management?
Yes.
And the storage cost is fifteen hundred a year?
Yes, sir.
And this backup that you're talking about would be eighteen hundred, but you could split it with the county clerk?
Right. If she could not split it with me, it would put me exactly where my budget is for twenty fifteen at the thirty-one, five seventy-two. But if we could split it, it would be thirty thousand, six seventy-two.
And I see that, uh, you have a statement here that the auditor has informed you that you did not have the thirty-seven thousand, four forty that was in the two thousand fifteen budget. What was this one? Uh, something put in the budget that wasn't actually there or?
Well, Pam Hart, the previous district clerk, was paying someone to scan some documents. And so she didn't inform prior to the budget workshops that that money no longer was gonna be collected. And so what I think she has done over the years is collected enough and saved it. And when she gathered enough, then she hired these part-time people. So I think that's what we're having to do now is start gathering it up again to be able to do so in the future. We paid one payroll out of October that paid the ending of September out of this budget.
So maybe we just carried a figure over or something?
Mm-hmm. That's correct. That's exactly what I heard.
Uh, let me ask a question. A lot of our, uh, high school students get, uh, credit for volunteer hours towards scholarships and what have you. We've seen a big success with this. Could we possibly look at maybe an intern program where you get maybe a high school junior willing to dedicate thirty hours a year? You know, thirty-two hours just one week, but, and then maybe use some volunteer hours to help in some of this and try to foster the spirit of volunteerism and, you know, I don't know if the court would, would like that. I mean, you certainly do background checks and what have you. But, you know, I'm, we know we're tight, we know we're gonna be tight. But a lot of these, uh, young, young, uh, men and women are very, uh, responsible, very talented, very computer savvy. And it's something they can put on their resume when they apply for scholarships and what have you. And certainly volunteering hours to a governmental agency, working in a department. You know, I don't, I don't know if that would be beneficial, but I would like to see if maybe the court would be open to that and creating some type of system. A program called internship or?
Well, now, in the past, we have used volunteers, paid out of some type of federal program or something. And some of these offices, I believe the person has used them. I think human resources has used them. I don't know where they still do it. Now, these were adults.
Right.
Through some type of program. So I, I don't think it's something the courts had versed to, getting free help.
I'm not against it. My only concern is there were paid people that did some of this work and I'm having to go back and redo some of it.
Right.
So, I mean.
I understand that.
That, that's my only concern there is, um, you know, we'll, we'll have stricter guidelines, I'm sure, for some of this. But I, I do have the money, um, you know, it's allocated in this year's budget. But I had wanted to keep some of it for next year if possible, just for the twenty-four hours.
Right.
But, I mean, we could, we could try. I mean.
Well, you know, the, the Texas House and the Senate runs on pages, you know? I mean, they're absolutely depending on a page program. And I don't know why, you know, with the, with the schools we have in our county, why you couldn't get the cream and crop out of these honors classes and everything else. They would probably work more diligent for an A in a, in a, in a grade or toward a scholarship, you know? I've seen one young, one young lady get, get an increase several thousand dollars in scholarships just based on her volunteer. Because colleges look at that versus may have the same student, the same GPA, but hadn't volunteered any hours.
I can check with the counselors.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and I would be happy to, if you decided to put anything together, Judge, I mean, I'd be happy to serve on that board because ministry's a lot of free help. You gotta motivate folks. But, you know, if we could get some type of system and then, you know, honor them from time to time in Commissioner's Court or give them a certificate, you know, that's, uh, that's worthy to hang on the wall, signed by the distinguished, the most honorable judge of Harden County. Anyway, just a thought.
Oh, it's a great idea. Then I thought about what she said, where we paid somebody to do it and it didn't get done right. And so if you teach somebody and then four days later you got a new one coming in and I don't, I can see where she's coming from with that too. So it's a great idea.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Circumstances.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on the, uh?
Yeah.
On the salary request by Ms. Paul. If you look at the, uh, the sheet that she printed out for us, on the two thousand fifteen budget for salaries to the two thousand sixteen budget for salaries, there's only a three thousand dollar increase. I mean, this is, the point I wanna make, this is a good example right here of some clerk in her office comparing another clerk. Me looking at this as administrator over our budget, I would say this looks pretty good right here. These people getting a raise and there's only a three thousand dollar increase in, in your budget. This is how step raises get implemented when Mr. Pell said, we really don't have it. But this is a good example of it right here. I mean, I, I wouldn't have any problem with a three thousand dollar increase in your budget for this right here. But this is a good example of what we were talking about a while ago. I mean, overall, this, I'd go for a three thousand dollar increase, but we can't do that forever, uh, department. So I think it's a good point.
Um, I guess if we could just go back to what you said earlier, you had said something about, uh, having some money left over in your salaries. And that if you're not able to do the copier as a. And that if you're not able to do the copier as a scanner, then you wanted to be able to buy some scanners, I believe?
Well, each girl has at their desk a, like a three-in-one printer, scanner, copier.
Right, and I think you said those were getting pretty old.
They are worn out, I've replaced some um of the little wheels that go in there. They're expensive, they cost half the price of the original machine.
Okay.
And um, the volume that they scan, I mean, it just wore them out.
Yeah.
And of course, we're fixing to pick up the volume.
Right.
And even the ones I've priced out for their desk cannot do as much as need be. So that's why I included the price for the large scanner. Because that scanner needs to be going eight hours a day so we can get those documents out of there, I mean.
So you're wanting to maybe move some money out of salaries into equipment?
Yes.
And what about, you also said you need to hire somebody to do the scanning, so I was wondering where that was going to come in?
I, I wouldn't hire anyone till twenty sixteen.
Your people that you have now would be able to get at least?
I think by the time July first comes around and we get the E-file going on, we're gonna be pretty involved in getting all the legit's worked out on that, so um.
Now I know you submitted for a grant as well for the equipment, you and the county clerk put in for one together, is there any chance of?
We did. I called OCA and he said, we haven't done anything with it yet. So I don't know where the county stands on that, but I'll keep calling, you know?
Okay.
But that's that remainder balance, um, where it says part-time clerk deputy.
Yes, ma'am.
I show it should be a balance of twenty-three thousand one oh eight. And what I'm asking for is um thirteen thousand forty-seven dollars. That would give me um, three scanners for, two for public terminals, one for the empty desk that we have that, um, I usually sit there when I go across. And then um, a scanner for each of the girls and then the large scanner. Which will rotate, working on that until we can hire a part-time person. I just wanna keep that thing rolling.
So of the, you said it was twenty-three one oh eight is what should be left over?
That's what I'm showing, I don't know if um Angela has that with her.
And you want to use thirteen thousand of that to buy the scanner?
That's correct.
Before the end of this year, I'm sure, right?
Yes, if possible.
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm thinking that'll have to come to court as a budget amendment. Is that correct?
If you're gonna use salaries. Okay. In the past, ours has just been untouchable for other expenses.
But I would like to know what the consensus is before we ask her to come to court with it.
I'm for it.
Was before that, yes. So I think if we just put that on the next agenda or when you get ready, let me know, we'll put it on the agenda as a budget amendment.
Sounds good.
And we'll bring it to court. Does anybody have any other questions about the twenty sixteen proposed budget by the district clerk's office? All right, thank you, Ms. Paul.
Yes, appreciate it.
Last but not least is the tax assessment collector's office, Ms. Stevens.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
I want races, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, I really don't see a whole lot of changes. Do you wanna go these uh item by item?
I just wanna point out to the members of the court that there's two line items for salary on uh Ms. Stevens' budget. Uh, but they add up to the same amount, the four ninety-four, five twenty-three. That uh one oh two line item is the elected official salary. And that is how every budget will become once they're all put together. So I think uh, if we just kinda start at uh line number three-ten with office supplies and go down from there?
Supplies. Okay, I would like to leave that as is, um.
Now, you're over the fifty percent mark at the end of March, but do you think you'll still be within?
But I'm, I will be okay because that is mostly uh paper that we use.
That you've stocked, stocked up on or?
Yes, during tax season and uh ink cartridges that we, so that should be okay.
Okay.
Now, the outside services, I would like to leave that, we should be okay on that. Now that um, outside services takes care of the printing of the tax statements, the uh tax rolls, the postage, and then our monthly fees uh per capital appraisal. Okay, the telephone, now, uh, I think we could probably come down on that because um
Would you be okay if we came down to five hundred dollars? That, would you feel comfortable with that?
I think so, I think that would be okay. Um, we just don't make long-distance calls much.
Are the other members of the court good with that amount?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The travel expense, I came down, uh, no, but didn't I come down two thousand on, to twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred, you had five thousand.
On that last year.
Uh, let me make sure I'm not, yeah, you were budgeted five thousand, you dropped it to twenty-five hundred.
And I brought it down to twenty-five hundred.
From last year to this budget year, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, yes.
Okay.
Shirley, is that enough?
That's enough, that's enough because uh, we're not, where I was taking someone from each department, like property taxes, motor vehicle and voter registration, uh, I I'm not doing that now. I do not know what the next tax collector will do. Because the voter registration has their own uh conference and the secretary of state pays for it, so I dropped that.
Being that you.
What are we coming through there, five hundred?
Being that you are not seeking reelection. The budget that we're currently doing, you will be here for that entire budget, so you don't foresee any.
Yes, I will. I should be here for the entire budget. Mm-hmm.
It'll be the next budget that's.
Yeah, I should.
Unless something, unless y'all know something I don't know.
Because my intentions are, my intentions are to stay until s- uh, after the general election. And, okay, then all my printing.
And we can't talk you out of that.
Uh, well, there's too many.
I'll take you to go eat a steak tonight.
There's too many that's wanting to put their hats in now, so. Uh, printing. Mm. I would like to leave that as is if I can. Now, the rental.
What does the printing take care of, Shirley?
The printing takes care of the envelopes. And that does not come out of ou- outside services like the tax statements do, but the printing comes, that is any uh ads that need to go in the newspaper and envelopes.
New uh election cards, does that come out of your budget or elections?
Now, it will come out of my budget because uh, the secretary of state used to furnish the applications for voter registration. They do not e- uh supply that for us any longer.
Of course, the uh, the new voter registration people will get new ones, but as far as everybody that's registered ever, how many years are those printed?
Every two years, we do a mass mail-out.
And evidently you've done it last year because you spent thirteen thousand something.
Yes. Well, I spent, spent thirteen percent, so. Now, on the rentals, that is for our copy machine. And uh, we might could come down a little bit on that. And, uh, yeah, that's just for our copy machine and it doesn't appear that we're having to use it as such, so. I think we could probably knock off a thousand on that one.
That sounds good.
If we go with fifteen hundred on that one.
Did you look at what you spent last year?
The year before, you spent twenty-six hundred.
Did I spend twenty-six hundred?
The year before that, twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, you're, you came down this, but you, you.
Yeah.
Do you know why it was up, up on those other two years or was there any other reasons that the copier would have been used more or different copy machine or?
Might have been a different copy machine, mhm. Okay.
Well, we don't wanna go below.
We don't wanna go below, no.
I would be staying for the same.
Let's just leave that.
Okay.
The next one, computer expenses. Now, I have not looked at that in prior years, but any computer expenses normally comes out of our outside services.
Just for what Commissioner Cooper said earlier about uh being able to keep up with that or track that in the future as to what we're spending, I'd like to see us leave that computer expense line item in there and encode any computer, uh, if you use any type of uh outside IT person in there for any reason, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Just so we can see what we're spending on that to.
Okay, and, okay, we will leave that. Now, uh, Lisa Finn is my IT person, she's very intelligent with that. So I've been very fortunate that she did have that expertise when she came to work. But um, you know, there may be a time we may need to call someone. Okay, on the miscellaneous.
Is everybody in agreement on that?
Yeah.
I know where you're fixing to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On the miscellaneous, um, I would like to leave that if, if we can. And then on the equipment expense, um, I'm not sure how much of that I've used in the past, um.
Used nine hundred and sixty dollars last year.
Okay, we could bring that down because most, most of my equipment expense is gonna come out of outside services. Or, and I probably should not say this to be recorded, but you know, secretary of state does pay for equipment, computers, that sort of things.
Yeah.
So normally what I do is I try to, and if we do not use the funds, they do go back into the state. So I will try to bring in new equipment for the voter registration department and then move that equipment on out uh to be used by some of the other clerks. And uh, that has worked real well with that. Now, the uh, do you have on that equipment expense, uh, what I actually spent last year?
Nine hundred and sixty dollars last year.
Okay.
But in twenty-twelve, you spent ten thousand two hundred and sixty-one.
That was a.
Voting machines?
Well, it was new, uh.
Not voting machines.
Seemed like I remember that, but I don't. Some kind of new equipment.
Did we do anything, was that the credit union?
No.
Equipment?
No, we did not, they furnished their own equipment.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
And, and twenty-thirteen, you didn't, you didn't have any, you didn't spend any?
Anything.
Zero for twenty-thirteen. So that probably could come down a thousand.
That could, that could come down.
Would you feel comfortable with fifteen hundred or would you rather have two thousand?
Fifteen hundred would be good.
On what's?
Equipment expense.
Shirley, on your printing, it seemed like in two thousand twelve, and I think Commissioner Cooper had discussed this. You had fourteen thousand, then two thousand fourteen, you had thirteen thousand, so do you do something every two years that you need to increase it for two thousand sixteen?
That would probably be uh, that would be the um, mass mail-out for the voter registration.
Now, that doesn't come out of the outside services?
Not necessarily, not on that one. See, the outside services, that's gonna be strictly for taxes.
Capital.
Capital appraisal. That's gonna be the tax rolls and the uh, uh, tax statements. That does not include the envelopes, the envelopes. And we do, uh, this is two thousand and fifteen, we will not have a mass mail-out this year, I don't believe.
In two thousand sixteen?
In two thousand sixteen, we should.
That's a general election.
Yes, sir, and that would have a mass mail-out.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So how much was it in twenty-fourteen?
Twenty-fourteen, it was how much, ten thousand?
Thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand.
Thirteen. Fourteen thousand dollars, thirteen nine thirty-eight.
And so that's twenty-third, that's twenty-fourteen, so we would be okay this year. But then we would need to up it next year probably, take into consideration the mass mail-out.
The two thousand sixteen budget that we're working on.
That's what we're working on.
It should be the same.
But you see, actually, the monies would not be, come out until we start the two thousand seventeen budget.
So after October?
After October, see the mass mail-out.
Okay, so all the mail-out would come in October?
Yes, sir.
Then I'd be in September.
Nothing in September.
Okay.
Actually, it would come out uh in December of next year.
Okay, we're just need to uh.
We need to make sure we don't forget that.
We're talking about what expense, what expense are we talking about?
We're talking about printing.
Where it reminds us?
About printing.
On printing.
That's, am I, and but I'm.
It, it would come out in sixteen or seventeen?
Cause in the past, it's come out in that odd even number year.
Well, it's gonna come out in the two thousand seventeen budget.
It would have to occur in October.
Cause in the past, it's come out in. So that'd be two thousand eighteen.
Because see, when your budget starts next year, two thousand sixteen to September two thousand seventeen, it's gonna come out of that budget. It's not gonna come out of this fifteen sixteen budget, that printing.
It's gonna come out of the se- fiscal year twenty sixteen budget.
Sixteen seventeen budget?
Sixteen seventeen, mhm.
Okay, then it has to come out in October before the general election then. You do all that in one month?
We do it in December. That, uh, right, we do it in December.
So the current card we have now is gonna cover the general election next year?
Yeah, it should cover the general election.
Oh, what you got in here now?
Yes, sir, mhm.
Okay, wait, let me.
I don't see enough money in there now.
Yeah, let, let.
No, there isn't, there is enough for right, for this year. Let me see.
Okay.
From October of this year through September of next year, it's enough money.
Okay, but in December.
Then, then December of two thousand sixteen, which we will have gone into another budget, a phys- another physical year.
Okay, so you're saying even though you'll do the mail-out before the general election?
No, sir, we won't do it before the general, it'll be after the general election.
Okay, that's voter registrations and all that stuff?
Yes, that's voter registration.
When I, so you don't, this coming year, you don't have any, did?
It shouldn't be, no, sir.
Yeah, okay, I, I understand you.
That's the ID cards that come in.
Now, it depends on uh, you know, if a lot of people register to vote next year, it may.
But right now, it's not intentional.
Well, we've already given her a savings of four thousand off of other line items. So I mean, we could add that in the printing and that would give her uh, seven thousand two hundred, but I have an adjusted budget. Cause what'd you say, she spent?
Which year?
Fourteen thousand.
For last year, for last year.
Twenty fourteen is fourteen thousand, okay.
Fourteen fourteen.
So twenty fif- and twenty fifteen so far, you have, you have spent, uh, if I'm looking at this right, printing, you've spent four hundred and twenty-five dollars, so twenty fifteen is your year down. Okay, twenty sixteen, which is what our next budget year is gonna be, will be the big budget year, so.
Ever, it's not gonna start until you, after you go into the twenty seventeen. You understand what I'm saying?
Okay, I see what you're saying, but on the past, though, Shirley, like.
If you just look at the history, though, it's been ever even.
Yes, it's been twenty twelve, twenty four, even years.
Every even year?
Even years, so twenty twelve, yeah, twenty four, twenty, twenty sixteen.
Okay. So that's one, okay.
So it should be coming up next year on that, that, that amount.
So will it be this December?
This year, this year is supposed to be down. At twenty thirteen, in, in twenty thirteen, uh.
So twenty fifteen is down.
Yeah.
And then twenty sixteen should be up.
Be back up.
Okay.
Right.
So that's gonna be, um, we have thirty thousand cards, so we'll have to print those.
That's twelve thousand dollars, near thirteen thousand dollars worth.
And postage. So we're gonna have to, we'll have to.
Looks like we shouldn't take anything, anything, right now, we've got thirty-five hundred fifty dollars, that should go back in.
And before, we never really adjusted, adjusted this because I always usually had a little extra in outside services that would cover overall. So we might need to move some of that from outside services to the printing.
Or take the cuts we've made and add them back in?
Well, could, could you do this?
Still wouldn't do enough.
Could you look at this and realize that you're gonna have this big mail-out and you adjust the line to what you think it'll be?
And I'll come back.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's gonna be, it's gonna be this year, but this is a major election.
But you think there's enough in outside services to cover?
Normally, in outside services, there would be enough left that would uh overall cover it and may still not be over on, on my budget. But I understand that where. But I understand that we're wanting to work strictly with the line items now, so we may need to make that adjustment.
But just overall.
Overall.
You feel pretty comfortable that the eight twenty-four, eight ninety-five, which would be the same budget for two thousand sixteen as it was for two thousand fifteen, exclusive of what we might do in salaries, is probably livable.
Probably livable, yes, sir.
Now, on the uh, you heard us go over the election budget earlier, you don't have anything to do with that, Ms. Stevens?
No, sir, and you know, we spoke with you about uh, maybe forming an elections administrator.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have spoken with my staff and they said they prefer to stay where they're at.
Okay.
So that, that just, at, you know, at this point anyway.
Okay.
Uh, there was something else I needed, we're having, and, and I realize that we do get, or the ladies get overtime time and a half if they have to work over. But we're having to work over most every evening, anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes. So, you know, at some point, I may need to look at changing my office hours to accommodate that, because that means that uh, three, at least three people are getting overtime, uh.
Would they be willing to take comp time?
Oh, they would love it.
And then build up and then maybe, when you're not so busy, have, take them, take an afternoon off?
Never sent her off that's not busy.
Well, I usually let them come and go, pretty much, but um, another thing I would like the court to look at, and I understand we may have, there, this is just a problem with my office, I have one that's retiring in August. Uh, and she's wanting to wait till August, so that she can get her four weeks vacation. It's causing a big burden in my department, and I would like the court to look at something in place as to, you know, should that be something I need to look at, or something the court could look at? Uh, because, you know, at this point, I cannot let her go. And uh, you and I talked about it, I cannot, however, um, it is causing a burden, because she's trying to use up all of this vacation that she has, making all of her doctor's appointments, however, she's wanting to wait until she rolls over, so she can get that extra four weeks when she retires. And uh, I would love for the court to look into that and see if, um, because, you know, that's throwing me then, the end of uh, September first of October, trying to hire someone that's going to be able to process tax payments.
Right.
And that's just throwing uh, a strain in my, in that department, and um, you know, if you have any.
That's one thing, I think, aren't, aren't y'all on the uh, Policy and Procedures Committee? That's one thing I'd like to ask y'all to look at, uh, along with the sick time, um, and I was gonna talk to y'all about this, we can do it now. The sick time, a person doesn't accumulate any sick time until they're here for a year, they get eighty hours, but we allow them to go ahead and, we front them forty hours in the first year.
Six months.
But if they quit before that year is over, that forty hours should come back.
They don't make them, they don't make them do six months here.
So what I'm thinking is, maybe we could go, I know some other cities and counties are doing where you earn so much every week or month or whatever. Maybe we should look at doing something like that, and another thing I, I was gonna ask is just what she brought up. Uh, we just have a lot of people that, that wanna retire, say, January or December thirty-first, but they stay another three or four, six months to get that other five weeks of vacation. And I don't blame one being, I'd do it if it were me, but I think we gotta look at that, cause it's, it's uh, putting some people in a bind.
Yeah, I had the same situation coming into office.
Did you?
Yeah, but it, and that's, maybe, maybe we need to figure that, you know, we know somebody's gonna retire and that's what they're gonna do, we gotta have to figure it in. Cause they are owed, you know, that amount of time, and you can't force a person to take their vacation or quit, I, I don't think that's legal.
No, it's not.
You're gonna have to pay them.
But I'm sure, again, that other uh, agencies have, have run into the same problem and have figured out a fix, and we need to, we need to look at doing the same.
Okay.
Whatever that may be.
Well, they have it now in their committee.
Yes, sir, y'all are.
Now, we need you to testify.
Yeah, right.
Give us direction. Take what they earned, divide it by four, every quarter, get so much. We have a lot of ways to kind of cap and be fair about it.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Stevens, anything for you?
Thank you.
Did your uh, people working over how you handle your comp time within your department as you're building this, I mean, uh, if they would, like Chris asked, if they would prefer comp time, that's what I would prefer my guys do.
Well, that's what they get, they get comp time.
If they work over an hour or two during the week, then, you know, at time and a half, you get comp time at time and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Let them off extra evenings, as you can, I, I know you're short-handed.
And what I did, I started running all my comp time through payroll, so that I get it printed out from Rhodes.
Mm-hmm.
And that way, I can make sure, cause that was one of the issues when I took the office was whether or not it was being documented correctly. And uh, and that's what I've been doing, I've run it through and then I, cause I've, I've found especially, uh, on a rainy day, it's good to let them go home and use comp time, when it rained out or whatever, or.
How often y'all rain out in the tax office?
Right after tax season, right after tax season.
Does anybody have any other questions about the uh, Tax Assessment Budget, or comments?
No, I appreciate all your time and I hate to see you retire, but I'm glad you get to retire.
Well, it's time to go.
I'm glad you get to, I hate to see you go.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for working with us on your budget, I certainly appreciate that.
I need to get my trailer registered.
You need to call Allen Roberts.
I moved with a nerve.
My momma go somewhere.
Believe it or not, they're still doing.
Who, man?
No idea.
Oh, Lord, yes, did you already stop?
I'm still waiting on them.
I, I, yeah, well.